... Everybody join with the end of the pledge, believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have the, uh, the firmest of the members of the day, whether twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, bring their meeting, please.
Um.
If there are any motions.
Thank you.
Brownie second, is that all you have?
Yes.
Glad to have everybody out here tonight, glad it's not snowing and we're not doing all that we did the last time. But Mr. Mickey was worried about the rain being blown in, so it always happens. Okay, um, I don't guess we have anybody signed in, Mr. Brownie. I'm kind of getting pretty much good. Okay, so our first thing to Josh Watson, Ashley Stevens, about Guy Valley Middle School.
Give me.
Backed up by Mr. Duncan.
I'll stand in for Ashley, she's on here. I think I could pass for her.
Sure, we can, sure, I'm messy, I'll take that.
I'm better, you can't stand there.
That's one of the better shirts, too. Uh, well, I'll keep that brief about the Costa Rica trip, we unfortunately had to cancel that, uh, due to lack of interest, so there's not really much to present on that. Uh, we had, only had about, uh, six signed up to go, um, our goal was about fifteen or sixteen, and then we had about three backed out just due to, you know, the terrorist things and stuff like that going on, which I can't blame anything for that, so unfortunately we had to cancel that. Uh, we'd like to, to speak to you about our, our needs with our gym. I really don't know where to start on this. What we'd like to do is, we put some feelers out, we've had some folks tell us that there's some legislature money, uh, for building renovations, and we'd like permission to pursue that, to, uh, get the floor replaced, get some roofers replaced, uh, we've got plumbing issues in there. It's, it's a mess, really, honestly.
Could you, need to place this?
What are, what are the, you know, what's the worst? Is the, is it the floor, the plumbing, the, what's worse, you know, in a priority? What's the worst?
Well, the thing is, if, if we're gonna replace the floor, I think the plumbing would have to be dealt with first, otherwise, because we got water getting underneath the floor, and that's just causing the wood to rot.
Getting underneath the floor?
Yeah, somehow.
Where's that coming from?
That, I wish I knew.
The door to life?
It, I think for, what it looks like for me, and Eddie's actually, actually, Eddie actually pointed this out to me, um, is the, the roof drains come down those inside walls, uh, there's, those go into a short ninety. Uh, it's not a sweet, it should have been a long sweet ninety put in there, but it's a, it's a short ninety, so you have all that water falling from the, from the top of the roof down to the bottom, a lot of times it stops there, so what you're getting is you're getting some, some backflow and it comes out under the floor. Um, so that's, that's part of the issue there, we believe, which, to, to fully investigate that, we'd actually have to tear the floor out and to look at that, see what, what could be done.
So, what do you mean, like you need to get out more of the floor even if you do?
Right, and, and Dana, uh, talking about moisture on the floor, Dana was just there today, uh, came over and put a moisture monitor on yesterday, is that correct?
Uh, some today and some yesterday.
Okay, what do you mean by that, Dana?
Pardon?
Explain that to us.
Moisture meter? Uh, it's a meter that you can stick in the floor itself, the wood, and it'll tell you how moist the wood is, and we went at different depths to try to figure out, uh, what's going on with it. Not just that one, but the one in Hamlin, it's got some new bowed up places on it, one's right under the basket. And so, we're just troubleshooting, trying to, trying to figure out what's going on, 'cause I know that Hamlin's kind of built on a swamp and we've had water problems under the concrete for ages out there. In fact, we had to put a pump station in the basement over there, 'cause water was running where the steps were and creating a hazard for the kids. And we actually had to dig the concrete up, put the pumps in there and pump that water in a different location. And, uh, but still, there's moisture issues on the floor at both locations.
Now, what we've heard he's talking about here, you're saying, is you, you would need to take the floor up in order to see if this drain is the problem?
Yeah, there, there are certain areas, which that floor, uh, you, you've been in the, in the gym there at Guy Valley, it's actually, that part is under the bleachers, and I didn't realize myself today, until today, how bad it was. I was, had moved the bleachers back to get some cleaning done over there, uh, it's causing some other problems. And that floor, uh, under the bleachers, it's, it's gone. I mean, it's black, it's, it's solid black, it's rotted, um, so, you know, we would actually have to get there into those bleachers and cut that, cut that part of the wood out.
Let me ask you this, is this just in that one section of this drain issue or part of the floor, I think?
There's, there's different, there's different places throughout the floor that are dark.
You can, you see places?
There's four.
One on each corner or something?
Uh, no, they're not on the corner, they're kind of offset probably twenty foot from the corner, and there's two on each side.
Well, Dana, where, where does that water go to? There are no forms or...
Uh, that's a good question. I'm not sure. I know that there was one of those, uh, drains that leaked at one point in time, I don't know, fifteen years ago or so? And the other side of where he's talking about, the floor got black and we cut out a big old section of it and replaced it. And when we tore that out, there was no moisture problems there, of course, that had been fixed. Maybe something similar has happened. I didn't close those bleachers where he's talking about, I didn't know about it, he just mentioned it to me today. So, what I can do is go back over there tomorrow, push those bleachers back in and see if we can investigate a little bit more on that part. Maybe it has, uh, gotten a recent leak or something that, uh, has been reported or something like that. I was primarily concerned today, when I was over there, about trying to figure out if some of that water wasn't coming from a roof issue that wasn't observable from the inside of the building. In other words, I thought maybe something was leaking where it would get between the walls, go down the wall without anybody ever noticing it. We had a similar problem at the Harts gym. But, it was pretty obvious what was going on there, and there was not obvious signs of that at Guy Valley or Hamlin. Because if there's water getting in that block, you know what it's gonna do to the paint, you'll get efflorescence on the paint, it's like a white looking material. There's no signs of that at either location, and there's no long-term signs of it, of that being the case. But there were some suspect places on the roofing material itself that could eventually make its way in between that block. Now, I'm not even saying that it's, the roof itself was even leaking, but it's possible the way some of the corners had peeled up, and they did find some suspect areas at both places that we're gonna work on.
But that doesn't have a plateau on it?
No, it's got a very, very good slope. Now, when you get off the slope area, it's very different at both locations. One of them, Hamlin's got gutters on the sides that it goes into, and then some long down spouts that goes in to storm drains, just very similar to what they've got. But the Guy Valley roof, it comes down at a steep, steep slope, and then it's got a valley with the additional flat roof type drains in it, and then it rolls back up to an edge. So, the water kind of stays in between, not like Hamlin's. Now, where that wa, where the, uh, rubber on the roof came back up towards the edge of the building, some, some places even that wide, some of the rubber had come apart where the seams are, and it's kind of flapped open, so some water could get in there. I don't think that would be the amount of water that would go under the floor the way it is, and I think it would be obvious, there'd be obvious signs on the mason. So, I think there's some other things going on. Of course, it's seven, that floor's seventy, seventy-four years old, is it about, seventy-five?
Could be a problem. Well, let's let Josh, I hate to interrupt, I'm starting to get involved in this thing. All right, so, go ahead, you were, uh, you were talking about, obviously, I, I don't think anybody's gonna argue or disagree, if you can credit it, obtain some funding, we're going forward in regard, uh, but it would seem that we're gonna have to address this in some way, but is that, do we all, or do you all agree that the first step is to isolate or locate what the problem is?
Another, another, and this, I think, uh, this was one of the things you wanted to talk about, is, is outside where you come into our gym, Riley, you've seen this, the concrete is dropped in the corner, and it's a, it's a pool there, if it rains, we get a lot of rain here, you've seen it as well, uh, but there's a pool of water there, and I just mentioned to Dana that there could be some issues with that water running under the building, and that may be causing some of our problems as well, there may be a pile of water that we can't, that we can't sit.
There could be a drain right there that's collapsed out of that sidewalk.
Right, a lot of, a lot of possibilities there.
Because there, i- isn't there a big, like, storm drain in, in the entryway between the old band room and the gym?
Yes, there is, and it's, it's, it's full, so whatever water's in there, it's staying in there, I don't think it's going anywhere, so that may very well be, be part of that, so.
Okay. Well, what would it echo, the river, round? It would ha, I mean, i- if...
It was supposed to go to that old ditch, I do believe, out behind the gym there between the gym and the...
You know, what John is saying is true, if that big guy, if it's not draining, I mean, that would have, that would run right under that walk that's following in, and it's probably a twenty degree angle there, isn't it, against the building?
It's way down.
But that would make sense if there was a drain pipe under that collapse, let that sidewalk, but that, that wouldn't take into account the water, the length of the gym, unless it was running the length of the floor underneath the boards, but it could account for some on that end.
Yeah.
And it... If it's not taking the roof water, it could be a backing up. Right, backing up in the four individual drains you talked about. I think that'd probably be a good place to investigate, I didn't know that drain was holding water like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it seems then, we gotta look first at the cause and where this water's coming from, and then the floor, is that, if it's seventy-four years old like Dana said, and then, you know, the problem that you're all saying, that would seem to be a high priority?
Yeah, and we'd even talked about just, just doing a complete refinish and stripping it all the way down, maybe, maybe it was just kind of surface damage, but they looked, the last group that came in to do an estimate, they pulled some of the Hamlin off the side of the wall, and they could stick their finger down, and there was maybe less than a quarter of inch left of that wood, so if you did any kind of stripping, it would just be gone.
Does anybody know what the cost of replacing the gym floor would be?
If, if we go straight up wood again, uh, you're looking at about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that side of the floor.
That installed and everything?
Yeah, they'll come in and remove it, install it and everything. Recently, though, we went down and played a game with Grace Christian the other day, and they got vinyl for it, and they said it was much cheaper than wood, and that's why they went with the vinyl. Now, I've, I've sent some feelers out to get, uh, some estimates on that, but I haven't heard anything back. I did find one website that, that was charging like three dollars per square foot, and it would end up almost half the cost of the wood, and they're saying it's, it's more durable than the wood is, it'll last longer, but, like I said, that, but that was just, that wasn't an estimate on our floor, that was just price, the general price that they had on the website, so it may not end up being that cheap.
So, we, we talked about the drainage problem and the floor problem now, is there some other issues in the gym?
Well, with the bleachers, uh, they're, I don't know, skip replacement, ninety-two?
Ninety.
Ninety?
Ninety, I believe.
Nine?
Ninety.
Yeah, um, so they've got a few years on them, the motors are in poor repair, and the last group that I had come in to, uh, take a look at those, said that they were out of code as well, because we don't have any railings on, on the aisle seats, we don't have any handicap seat, and they said it's fine because the policy didn't go into effect until after we had put those bleachers in, but they said even if we just replaced the, the motors, that it would put it out of code, so we ended up having to replace the whole thing anyway.
Are we talking about one side of the gym, or both sides, or what?
Well, that's the other thing, I mean, we're middle school, we don't really need both sides, so they, they said if we did both sides, at, at the existing capacity, it would be about ninety to a hundred thousand dollars to replace those, but we don't even use it all, so my thought on that was to just use one side, replace one side, and that would cut down a lot on the cost, 'cause every, almost every middle school gym we go into to play, they've only got one side bleachers, and your benches and scoreboard and everything else is on the other side of the gym.
Is one side better than the other? I mean, would you...
No, they're pretty well the same.
They're about the same.
We, we have to have, what, maybe fifteen or twenty kids to help us push them in and pull them back out.
Dana's getting ready to replace some wheels, as soon as they come in, I know they've got an order that hopefully will help some of that.
We've got wheels and seats. We've got seats in stock, but we've got wheels on order.
But if you replaced one side, you'd have to make it handicapped accessible and those type of things that they mentioned to you?
Yeah.
So...
But that's nothing, that was included into that cost.
Well, what I'm thinking though, is that that would take care of the issue there at the school, 'cause you would always have a, a, a location for people that were handicapped and running, and they wouldn't necessarily have to ever use the side, even if others did.
Right.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Now, so the cost for, is this the ninety to a hundred for both sides or...
That was for both sides, yeah, so...
And, and we even thought, we even talked about, uh, you know, the bleachers that are there now, those are pretty tall bleachers, even cutting those, those bleachers down, in other words, only going six rows of bleachers on each side as opposed to twenty on each set.
We can look at different options.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of options there, and, and again, same thing with that, if they come in to the bleachers, they take all that out and do all that work themselves, too.
Anybody else have any questions, particularly, something? Mr. Mickey, what are your thoughts?
Obviously, we need to do more research to find out where the water's coming from, I mean, that has to happen first, and then once that's addressed, then we can work with options, I mean, if we have funding available, we can work with it. Got some other fundraising, smaller fundraising ideas to, to kind of go along with that, I don't know how much it would offset. Some things I've mentioned to, to Mr. Watson was, was actually selling pieces of the floor, uh, you know, having a grave Guy Valley High School with the dates on it, you know, a lot of people would, I think a lot of people would go, go for things like that, you know?
If it's as thin as Josh says, though, wouldn't you have to frame it?
Yeah, you may.
You might see through it. Keep a break in it?
You may, you may have to, it's, it's, it's pretty thin, it's, you know, it's been ground down, I know, uh, Mr. Mickey has said, even in his day, every year, you guys would go and sand that thing down, every, you know, so it's been sanded on a lot over the years. And the last time that it was actually taken down to the wood and repainted was two thousand one.
Two thousand one?
Yeah, that's, uh, so, you know, it's, it's got a lot, a lot of the, the finish that we put on each year, it's got a lot of that buildup on it now as it is, so...
And that was the public that did that, then, because I was in on that.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of work went in on that, so...
Well, there's obviously a need there, and I think, Mr. Mickey, if you'll kind of direct that along with Dana, Dana, or you, Mr. Mickey, give me all you need to do, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Starting with that front issue and working your way back, apparently, and then we'll go there now. Should it be necessary, I guess we could always supplement funding if we, some of that could be, Dana?
Yes.
Every money that we had to, if they could pursue it. So, my, uh, suggestion at this point is, try to get some money, if you can, and if not, um, you know, we'll, you know, look at the local money that may be available, then we'll just kind of get, if you have a need, we'll kind of see what we can do about it. Anybody else have anything else?
The only other thing I'd be interested in would be a skybox for administrative board members.
The administrators, the administrators should never be sitting down. They should always be over there by the door, walking around, right view?
That's what I do now.
Good way, you don't need to. No, but I think from a high vantage point, you can do a lot more good than you can walking around.
Thank you, thank you, Ralph. Yeah, yeah.
A bit of array of video cameras, video effects, everything.
That's right.
I'll bear a mind now, this is, you gotta be down there where the action is. Thank y'all.
Thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Okay, Dana, is this, are you gonna speak about just that, or are you gonna talk about some other stuff?
Yeah, I could talk a little bit more about that, and maybe explain, maybe why Guy Valley's got some special issues that even Hamlin has.
Can you also, somewhere, have you kind of get that thought along, tell us about the other gyms?
I will tell, yes, I, I did have that plan to talk about.
Oh, great, okay.
I'll talk about this first. Uh, this is what I actually submitted to the SBA for funding for the, uh, grant, for the roofing grant, and, uh, I got a pleasant surprise. According to our CEFP, I think it had the roof listed at six thousand three hundred and thirty-three feet, and when I went over and measured, the actual roof was two thousand eight hundred and eighty feet, which drastically lowered our cost for this project.
This is the Guy Valley roof?
This is the Guy Valley roof that we talked about, uh, last week.
It's cool.
Yeah, not the gym. The gym roofs, well, let's keep talking about that. Which is, if you see there, the cost, the total cost now is gonna be somewhere around twenty-six thousand, which our share would be somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen. And as you can see, that roof was installed in nineteen eighty-eight on here somewhere.
Yeah, the warning, fifteen year warning expired two thousand thirty.
Okay, got you. So, that's what, uh, that's what went into the SBA prior to February the first.
When are those awarded, Dana?
I don't remember seeing the date on that, do you, Jeff?
I haven't either.
What they're gonna do, or what they have done in the past, we got a grant very similar to that for this roof on this building right here. Of course, it was a much bigger project, and, uh, at the time, what they did is they hired a roofing consultant, I believe they were out in Huntington at the time, and this, they do this about, seems like it'd been ten years ago, we did that. And they had a roofing consultant go around and look at every county's project, and they kind of prioritized based on need, who they thought was in worse condition than others, and then they also estimated costs, and they gave a lot of information to the school building authority to help them make that decision, and based on reading the letter that they sent to us, that seems to be the way they're gonna do that again. And it probably, they'll probably start looking at roofs in the spring, it depends on how long it takes them to look at fifty-five counties. I'm gonna guess in the fall, but that's a guess, it could happen sooner. Uh, I would hope that it would happen in June, so that you could get your roofing project done over the summer nights, but...
Doesn't always work that way.
And then always, things, uh, don't always happen as fast as I'd like it to happen. Okay, is that all of the questions you have about that? Well, Greg talked about gyms. All right, as we talked about Guy Valley's bleachers, we re, new bleachers were installed in nineteen ninety, at the same year, we used SBA money for thi, for this. We replaced Duval, Guy Valley, Hamlin, and Harts bleachers all at the same time with SBA. Back then, it was called, uh, it had a different name for it, wasn't needs or MIP, it was a percentage based on enrollment, you got a certain amount of money that you could do, uh, facility improvements.
So, you're saying that all the gym, all four schools had new bleachers for them?
At the same time.
Both sides of the gym?
Both sides. Every bleacher in the county was in bad shape at that time, and in nineteen ninety, we used our, it was called, I don't remember what it was called now, it was called net funds, SBA net funds, and you, well, how they figured your money, is they took your total enrollment and gave you a certain amount based on student enrollment, and of course, it was based on the state student enrollment. At the time, each county got a different amount of money to spend on facilities, you probably, we're here about that. That's what we did, and in nineteen ninety-four, four years later, we put new roofs on every county except for Harts. We did Duval, Guy Valley, and Hamlin's roof in one year, in nineteen ninety-four.
On the gym to the schools?
On the gym. The gym roofs were replaced with rubber roofs. They're all similarly made. Harts was done a year or two earlier because their need was a little bit more severe at that time, so theirs was doing, was done a year or two, I didn't look that up, a year or two before the other three were done. That part's on memory, this part of that. Harts has already replaced their roof, they replaced it when we gave the building to the county commission, and it was in need. Now, these other three are doing fairly well so far, but I think you're gonna need to spend money on roofing prior to spending on money on gym floors or bleachers. That's my prediction.
Are you talking about Duval and Hamlin?
And Guy Valley.
And Guy Valley, too?
You're gonna probably, I think the bleachers go out with the roofs, I think the wood floors, of course, you wouldn't wanna put a new wood floor down with a roof that's getting close to its end. So, if it were me, I would focus on the roofs first, 'cause it's kind of...
What's a roof replacement, Dana, idea?
The roof replacements, I looked that up, what I paid then, and I, I took the figures based on what we're, we're, we used for this roof. I, I spent roughly forty thousand dollars per roof then, and it's gonna be double that now. For nineteen ninety, it'll be close to eighty now. Now, now, one of the reasons that Guy Valley's floor, I think, is having some moisture issues is very unique, I've never seen anything like it, it's, it is installed directly on the concrete, there's no wood in between the wood floor and the concrete. It's got concrete strips in it, it's got a hook on it that hooks into that wood floor. Hamlin's is done a little differently, it's got, it's got wood strips under, and when we've tore sections of that wood out, the wood strips in some places that were really bad were just, you could crumble, that's how deteriorated that wood log. So, it's been getting moisture from that concrete for seventy years. Uh, I don't even know if they put vapor barriers under the concrete when they, when they covered it in nineteen fifty-four. So, and, and, and the one thing that's causing these floors to, to do what they're doing even worse is because they're built, they were built differently. The floors that are built now, they take plywood with like big, huge rubber suction cups on them, and they, they put the plywood down, so there, there's room in there for it to breathe, and then when they put the wood flooring, the wood flooring hasn't changed that much, it's tung and griff just like, like it was then, but they, they make spaces between the boards, about every four foot, so that it has room to move. They didn't do that then. Those boards are tight, and then you've got finish on top of that, there's no way that that floor can breathe. They do, the new floors can breathe a little bit, so, there's lots of reasons that the old floors are having issues that probably the new floors wouldn't have as many issues. Of course, if you get water under there, if there really is a lot of water getting under it, then that would, that'd tear your new floor up too, but I don't know how much water's under there. When we've tore the floor out, it's been pretty dry, even the bad places, except for the, when we had the storm drain issue with the leak, that it's running under the floor. And there's been some other exceptions where water really did run under or on top of the floor, I can remember at Duval, one of the storm drains got stopped up outside with leaves and what have you, and it ran through the door, and you can tell at Guy Valley and at Hamlin that there's been that situation in the past where water had run or been carried in from entrances and exits. The floor's much worse in those areas than it is anywhere else, other than like where we've had a problem with the storm drain or something, so, there's lots of issues, lots of issues, and I'm not sure, I, I, we need to look at it more closely, and if I can find something, we'll certainly fix it. If we can get some drain open, a storm drain outside open, and we'll get it open. I, I believe there are drains, storm drains at Guy Valley, for example, that run all the way to the river, I believe that field, there's one that runs under that field a good long way, I'm pretty sure of that.
Yeah, there's one that, down in the, uh, the courtyard area in the school, which is, you know, way down below road grade and, and field level, it has to go somewhere, and I would imagine the river is the only place it could go.
Now, at West Hamlin, I know there's storm drains running, I was around there, and I wanted to play around when that Guy Valley team was built, so I don't know. And maybe we can find some blueprints to help us solve some of that.
So, what are you, are you saying that if we go back to the first thing that needs to be done at Guy Valley, is to locate this water issue, the drain and all that other stuff?
Make sure there's not the other storm drain that the problem we've talked about, make sure that that other storm drain's not leaking and water getting under the floor, we can do that first.
Do that first, and then are you gonna go to the roof?
We're gonna go, we're gonna do some repairs on the roof, we, we're gonna do that as soon as we can, we'll do that anyway. We found some issues, now, whether it's gonna solve any of this or not, well, I'm not sure.
But they're here asking to have the floor replaced, but apparently, what you're saying to us is that you wouldn't recommend doing that until we put a new roof on the thing, is that not right?
Yeah, I, I don't believe I'd spend that kind of money immediately without taking care of the roof.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Eric, so are you recommending or thinking that we should deal with the drain issue, correct that, find out what Trump thinks it?
Yeah, I, I don't believe I'd spend that kind of money immediately without taking care of the roof.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Eric, so are you recommending or thinking that we should deal with the drain issue, correct that, find out what's wrong, fix it, and then put a new roof on the Guyan Valley gym before we perceive as anything else?